Call this regular meeting of the San Marcos City Council to order. Today is Tuesday, September 17th of 2024. The time is 6:00 PM. Ms. Trevino, would you call the roll?
Mr. Prather, Mr. Scott, Ms. Garza, Mayor Heeson.
Here.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Here.
Mr. Gleason.
Here.
And Mr. Mendoza.
Here.
We have a quorum present.
All right, our invocation tonight will be given by Chaplain Mike Colfield from the San Marcos Police Department.
If it be appropriate, please bow your head. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to gather here tonight. Thank you for our elected officials, the businesses, the churches, the families and the individuals that make our city of San Marcos the great place that it is. We pray for our mayor, our city council, our city manager, our city leaders and staff. Thank you for their hard work and sacrifice. May you generously give to them wisdom, strength and courage to skillfully govern the people of our city. May they produce creative ideas and solutions to the problem. Grant them a sense of welfare and true needs for our people of San Marcos. Give them the ability to work together in harmony, even when there may be an honest disagreement. And lastly, Lord, we ask you to give our mayor, our city council, our city manager, our city leaders and staff a peace that surpasses all understanding in their lives, in their homes and in their family. Amen.
Amen. Next item is pledges of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Our next item is our citizen comment time period. The city council will hear citizen comments at work sessions, workshops and regular meetings. Sign up is required prior to the deadline, either online or at the city clerk's office. And if you were requesting to speak online, a call in number and link was provided. You may speak once during the citizen comment time period and may not yield time to others. If you speak now about a public hearing topic on tonight's agenda, I ask that you not repeat exactly the same comments again during the public hearing on the same topic. You have three minutes to speak when you state your name. We've got a timer displayed on the screen. You start in the green. When the timer gets to only yellow, you'll have less than 20 seconds left, so it's time to wrap up. And when the timer is red, your time to speak is up and a bell might ring. The mayor and council will endeavor to ensure that meetings are conducted in a courteous manner and in an atmosphere free of defamation, intimidation, personal insults, profanity or threats of violence. If you do any of those, you will hear the gavel and I will ask you to leave the council chambers. This is your warning. Our first speaker this evening is Lisa Marie Capoletta and she joins us online. She.
I do not see her, Mayor.
She hasn't joined us yet, okay. Our next speaker that signed up is Rodrigo Amaya and he will be in person. Following him will be Ezekiel Enriques.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Rodrigo Amaya, 322 Laredo Street. Took time to come out here this evening to share a little bit of some concerns I've noticed in the city. You know, I had to say that I know for the most part, it usually falls on deaf ears, but this summer, noticed lots of problems at the park. Noticed that it appears that the city is somehow catering to the Lions Club, closing streets and stuff like that, so they're not inconvenienced. That really is a big concern to not just me, to a lot of citizens here. In addition, I noticed last Thursday in that football game, I know a lot of times when we've talked about police response time and staffing with the police department, somehow, some way, they were able to bring up all kinds of units to help deal with the university football games. Once again, you know, this is the city of San Marcos. I know the university is right up the hill and it just appears that this city just waits for orders from the hill and that's not the way it's supposed to be. I hope y'all make an effort to try and change that. I know y'all talk about having a healthy relationship with the university, but you know, I've noticed the street right next to the little, the big HEB up here on Thor Plain, I noticed when they have those games, all those streets are blocked off and you can't use that. My understanding is that city property, I don't know why the university is being allowed to block those off for football games and stuff like that. At times, it's hard for citizens to go up to HEB and Park and go grocery shopping because they're having to close that street off for a football game. Once again, this is the city of San Marcos. Why we're catering to the Lions Club, why we're catering to the university, it's not anything that we're happy with. Back to the river this past summer, the reason I mention that is because on one occasion, I was, I had a heated discussion with some guys in the surfboards there at the spillway, went up to the marshal's office to ask for help and noticed that the Lions Club wasn't running, so there was nobody at the marshal's office. So San Marcos PD had to come out and deal with the call. In addition, I've noticed some deputies performing security detail after hours. You know, this issue with the river is something that we know for next year. We're gonna have a lot of visitors coming over here. Why is the city not making the necessary preparations to make sure that everybody's interest is looked after, not just the Lions Club? So just something to think about. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ezekiel Enriques.
My name is Ezekiel Enriques. I hope I don't run out of time again. I was born and raised here in San Marcos and probably will die here in San Marcos. I'm not here to insult anyone or disrespect anyone, but I am here to say like it is. Before you all raise our utility bills across the board, y'all have to take into consideration who uses the most water and electricity. All you have to do is look at the bills when they're printed out and you can see who is using the most water and the most electric, electricity. And yes, it is the people with the green lawns, the people with the swimming pools and those people that are rich, that use the most, I think they should pay more than us, the poor people. And I don't know why across the board, why must us poor people help pay for their bills when they're the ones that are wasting water and wasting electricity? And that is exactly what y'all are doing when you all raise our rates across the board. It's we're helping the rich people pay their bills. That's not right. Poor people are already struggling, poor people are already struggling to make ends meet. We have to pay our bills, mortgages, car payments, put food on our table. And then, and then when you all raise our bills, that there's more money that we don't have. Sometimes we have to choose between keeping cool in the summer, keeping warm in the winter or buying food because we don't, we don't have enough money. And if you, when you all raise the rates across the board, that's putting a burden on the poor people and the rich people are never going to learn how to conserve water or conserve energy. They're gonna keep wasting it because they, they have the money to do it. What I suggest is having a separate and higher rate for the rich people than the poor people. Let them pay their share of, you know, of the utilities that they use and not us, poor people, having to bill the amount. What I recommend also is if you really want to balance a budget, you have to fire half the city employees. And if you really, really want to save us taxpayers' money, quit building more fire stations, state of the art fire stations. Thank you.
Our first item, number one. Ms. Trevino.
Provide an update on the new city hall in Hopkins redevelopment project and discuss the creation and appointment process of a Hopkins City Center Steering Committee and provide directions to staff.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This will be sort of a duet presentation tonight between myself and Ms. Perez-Carry. So we'll sort of go back and forth on that. So when I was here a couple of weeks ago, we started talking about the committee process. There was definitely some feedback about the makeup and a request for us to go back and get a little bit more information to ensure our process and membership was as inclusive as possible. So tonight, we're gonna bring you back some information on that as well as some conceptual, high level plans on the general public engagement because I think it's important to remember that this committee is one part of a larger comprehensive engagement strategy. Next slide. The committee purpose and membership, we've talked about this before, so I won't belabor all of these, but the highlights are really that this group is intended to provide guidance and feedback throughout the process. They are advisory. And when we were here a few weeks ago, Councilmember Gleason compared it to the bond committee that you all had. There was a citizen group. That's a really great kind of analogy to think about what this role will be on the project overall. It is definitely the goal that the membership should be diverse and reflective of all the residents of San Marcos. And really, they should have a sincere interest in the project and be invested in the community in the future as well. Next slide. So last, when I was here at the last meeting, we had some discussion on the makeup and based on the conversation from the council, it sounded like an initial concept that the council felt comfortable with was each council member appointing two members with the addition of the mayor and one other council member. You all, of course, are subject to change that tonight. I think the goal for tonight is to get your feedback on what you'd like that makeup to be, but I'm just putting that up there as a refresher on what was discussed last time. Next slide. So Griselle, I think is gonna take this one. Yep.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Griselle Perez-Carry, Diversity Equity Inclusion Coordinator. As we talk about the steering committee, the makeup and the process, it's really an opportunity for us to invite our community members and neighbors with their unique perspective that have been shaped by their identities, lived experiences and expertise to co-create possibilities during the concept development phase of the new city hall in Hopkins City Center that is affirming and welcomes all of our community members. Earlier this year, I came to council about participation in a research project that framed its recruitment around the prioritization of participants that are Black, Latino, Indigenous, Native American, Asian American and Pacific Islander, other persons of color, members of religious minorities, members of the LGBTQIA+ community, persons with disabilities and persons otherwise affected by persistent poverty or inequality and individuals who belong to multiple such communities, recognizing the way that all of these identities interact to create a unique perspective and experience. It's through this lens that staff recommends that the steering committee really prioritize and be reflective of expansive diversity here within San Marcos community in terms of, again, those lived experiences, networks and identities and invite communities that have been underrepresented within our outreach and engagement. Additionally, we recommend and believe that it's important for the voices of those that are most affected be represented within the steering committee. Next slide. We recommend specific representatives that could speak to and provide their perspective as resident of Rio Vista, as partners, collaborators and business leaders of organizations and small businesses and a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission to serve on the steering committee. All right. As we consider the recruitment for the steering committee, we're looking to infuse different strategies from communications, full menu of marketing, along with traditional methods that council and our community members may be more familiar with to include social media, website, email and videos in both English and in Spanish. One example could be really investing in targeted ads that allows for us to reach out to folks based off of their demographics. Though anecdotal, one of the members of the communications team spent some time surveying folks that we engaged with at the Hispanic Heritage Exhibition Walk to just gauge where they get their information on the city. By and large, most said either social media or the daily record, which are both available to us in strategy. While some of this is currently being outlined at this time, staff recommends that the recruitment window be a minimum of 30 days to allow enough time for information to be spread across the larger community and for organizational partners to select their nominations. At this time, I'll turn it back to Ms. Cafrey to provide information on that general public engagement process.
So like I said at the beginning, the committee is really not a substitute for general public engagement by any stretch. It's really one piece of a comprehensive engagement. So I wanted to spend just a second addressing how the general public will also be encouraged to engage in multiple different methods and possibilities throughout the process. So of course, much as the city currently does, we'll use multiple methods for engagement, so whether that be in person or online tools, whatever may be accessible to people or most convenient. Not only do we anticipate public engagement will at some times be information going out, at other times, it will really be soliciting input and most importantly, showing people that have provided input how it's being considered and integrated where feasible. And then, we think it's really important that overall, that there's feedback on this engagement strategy from the committee. So we would make an intentional effort of including these folks as we're making those plans, primarily for 2025, to make sure we're getting their input and how we're engaging the larger community as a whole because really, this committee should be partners in that effort. Next slide. So at this point, I really, you know, leave the discussion to the council. I think what we're looking for is direction on the committee composition, recruitment and application timelines and we're happy to take direction.
Okay, council, we talked about this a lot at our last meeting. There were a couple that, or at least one that I have in my notes. Maybe I didn't say it out loud. Maybe it didn't get written down or whatever. So I believe that my notes say mayor and two council members. Is that where we left that? Or is it mayor and one council member?
I honestly thought it was mayor and two council members.
Okay.
That's what I wrote down on my notes.
Okay.
Okay. So, so are we still good with that? Mayor and two council members? I'm looking for yeses.
Okay with that.
Okay. So we're good there. And then, we had talked about council each appointing two people who may fall into one of these other categories. The issue is, we don't know that until we get here. So sometimes that gets a little tricky, but it would be good for us to attempt.
Maybe we should maybe have like a bank, like, you know, three or four names that we're considering. Like, we have our top two, but in case that happens, all right.
I think that's what we need to do and that's what most of us did when we appointed the comprehensive plan committee, was out of all the applications. I think I had like five or six because I didn't go first. I'm going, okay.
Alternate, nothing. An alternate.
Alternates, yeah.
Have some alternates in mind.
Yeah, don't come in with two names.
And the one thing I'll recommend too is the way we've been doing board appointments with the matrix has been very, very helpful. And to have that matrix have, if someone is applying and they're a part of either one, two or three of the other categories, whether that's River Foundation or University Downtown Association, have them what they're affiliated with of what we want and that way, we know that they are.
It'll be on the application, but it'll save us each having to do that if we just know what constituency they might represent.
Would you also like us to include a spot where someone can, if they'd like to, identify as an underrepresented group?
That's in the, Ms. Trevino, would you talk about what people can do with the application, the online application that we have?
For the boards and commissions?
Yes, please.
Yes. So you're talking about like just going to our website, clicking a button?
Right.
Please be very careful with the specific boards that do require like a specific position, like neighborhood commission.
Just for this one.
Oh, this one will be, I mean, we just haven't discussed with staff how we wanna.
Here's where I was going with that. There are two places that people can tell us about themselves. Why do you want to be on this commission or board committee? What do you bring to the table? And then we have another free form part that is tell us about yourself. And I'm right about that, Ms. Trevino, is there's two? Did I characterize those correctly? Yeah. And she was correct about the processes. I would hope people would find it fairly easy to apply.
Does the council also want to require residency? That was some discussion that when I rewatched the meeting, there was mixed conversation.
No, I think we agreed that they have to be San Marcos residents. We were discussing the length of time that they have been in San Marcos, but I believe we were in agreement on must be a resident. Okay. So that one is a yes.
Mayor, we could customize the application the way staff and council consensus desires.
Right. So must be a resident. And that's just a question that we asked them. Okay, so are we still at, we're gonna each appoint two people?
When?
Yes?
When? Thirty days outreach.
Well, hold on. There will be, and I'm gonna get to this, there'll be publicity. Ms. Trevino will open up the process so that this is an option for people to apply for boards and commissions. We need to choose a deadline and then we will make those appointments. So that's something that we're gonna talk about before we're through today. You had talked about from the neighborhood, nearby neighborhood. And I don't know that we landed on if that's one or two people. Of course, any one of us could also appoint somebody from the neighborhood that may be on our list, but we want to make sure that we have one or two. Looking for answers.
I think one for sure and they may end up with two.
Mr. Mendoza.
I'll be honest and I will say that.
Can you speak into Mr. Gleason's microphone? If yours is problematic.
Me, myself, I'm gonna be recommending two people from my neighborhood by itself, so I don't know if that defeats the purpose of us having no choice of it.
I think what we can do is if we appoint first, then we'll see how many of these constituencies we have already checked off and then we'll see what we need to do to fill the rest of those seats. We may, we may get it all done through hours. Okay, we're still at two and resident is one, two?
Yeah, I think one and I mean, that's fine, yeah.
Okay, Ms. Gonzalez?
One and two.
One or two?
One.
Two, two from neighborhoods.
From the adjoining neighborhood, from Rio Vista and nearby.
Actually, you know what? Let me change mine. I want to, please.
Okay.
Mendoza, you live in Rio Vista, right?
I do, yes, sir.
Okay, you're at two. Ms. Gleason is at one.
Rio Vista is there, but we've also got Iswada Lupa, who is so close as well, that would be affected by this.
They would be considered in the neighborhood. You're just at one? Okay. Mr. Prather, did you say two?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Two, two, two. I'm gonna say two. So it's gonna be two, minimum. Might end up being more. Okay. We also talked about Planning and Zoning Commission.
And I would like to recommend that their commission come with their recommendation before we do our appointments.
Yes.
Their choice is.
Yeah, 'cause they can go ahead and do that while we've got all this advertising.
That they get theirs done first.
That's a good point. Thank you.
So P and Z will pick their own?
Yes.
Yes. And it doesn't mean that more of them may not end up on there, but that they get their choice.
Right. But again, we'll know if that person.
Which one they chose.
You know? Okay. So we're saying P and Z, they choose and it will be one? Okay. All right. Maybe I didn't say this last time. I was thinking maybe somebody from the library board?
Oh, absolutely.
Since they're neighbor, so. And they get to choose. Are we good with that one? Library board, one, and they get to choose that person? I can see your thought process.
Well, I was like, we're, you know, library staff, but do we count on staff?
Staff will have ample input. So this will be a board member.
Well, I had thought about the, I had thought about the library board, but I also thought about the neighborhood commission too. So I don't know how far down that rabbit hole we wanna go, but the library is fine. I think the library board should have.
Library board, so it's, and we're one?
One.
One.
One, okay. Ms. Gonzalez? Okay. Okay. Mr. Gonzalez, you had brought up handicapped. So is that still something that we wanna make sure that we guarantee?
If it's not somebody who.
I've already got somebody in mind.
Yeah. If it's not somebody who is involved with that community directly, then it's somebody who does work with that community as a representative.
Handicapped and associated. Okay. Are we good with that, Ms. Prather? Ms. Gleason?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, yes. Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Okay. Another one that we had was, and this brought up another concept that I brought up, is I don't know how many meetings there will be. And be sure before you appoint your people, you talk to them and say, gotta show up at all the meetings? Okay. So there might be some folks that would be subject matter experts that may or may not be part of the committee and required to go to all the meetings. And that's where I was thinking the River Foundation might fit in, might not. I don't know how many others might fit into that category.
Yes, you all had discussed it at the last meeting and when I rewatched it, my understanding was you had sort of asked staff to consider that as we developed our recommendations. So what we've brought you back is, I think, a request to have some of your most active community association type groups represented and we'll be happy to reach out to subject matter experts as they are needed. Additionally, those groups are really ripe to also be involved in the general public engagement as needed.
Okay. That's someone that I think we want to make sure. And in this town, there is not a chance that we wouldn't, but that was just one that I think, since the project is so close to the river, if we were.
And they were listed as a potential community group.
Right. So member or subject matter expert?
I really, I mean, the community partners that gathered the list that you gave, I thought was pretty thorough.
Can we go back to that slide?
That would be good.
And I think that was a really good list. The university, downtown association, GS and PD.
That's where I've got, then I'm asking about.
I think that's full list. That we need to just make sure those are covered one way or another.
Okay. Full member, subject matter expert? That's the question. Ms. Prather?
Could it only be one of that? Or one from each one of these kind of groups?
I'm asking about the River Foundation right this minute.
Uh, definitely, uh, I would make them a full member. We're trying to get as much community buy-in as possible.
I'm one of each of these groups.
I'm asking about River Foundation right now. I've got my little list, and I'm filling out here. So River Foundation, you're good. Okay, so not subject matter expert, although they will fill that role in certain areas.
We are happy to go whatever direction the council wants. At the last meeting, there was a lot of concern about wanting to make sure this group was as inclusive as possible. And so I, I am worried the more prescriptive we go, it might be hard to actually get voices we don't normally hear, but that's just a comment for you all to consider, and I don't know if Ms. Preskeri wants to say anything on that front.
No, certainly echo that, yeah.
Did you say that again, please? I'm not sure I followed.
Yeah, so the more prescriptive we get with, with the list, I think that there's the possibility that then we are excluding folks, right? And so if we wanna make sure that we're expansively diverse of our community members, um, we have to take into account what membership looks like within some of the organizations of our partners.
Inclusion of these did not mean exclusion of others. It was to make sure that we get certain, uh, folks, like the neighborhood, to make sure that they are on. It doesn't mean others don't get to be on.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
This'll be fourteen. Okay. Um, university?
Yes.
We're good with that. Downtown association? Ms. Prather?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. We've got Chamber of Commerce. And the Greater San Marcos Partnership. That wasn't necessarily where I was going with those. They may end up being on there. I'd be leaning more towards the chamber.
Yeah. And, and the downtown association too.
No, we've got downtown association. We've already checked that one off. Mr. Prather?
Uh, chamber, definitely chamber.
Definitely chamber, okay.
GSMP is more a regional thing, but...
Yeah, definitely chamber, and I'm, I'm open to the GSMP thing.
Well, I mean, if, if they end up being an appointee by someone, that's perfectly fine. I think I've got... I think that exhausts my list. So that is, there's three, fourteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. It could be twenty-six, or it could be twenty-ish.
I thought we were at seventeen. With two appointments per council member, plus two council members and the mayor?
Uh huh, and then all of these?
Oh, those are in addition.
In addition to?
Yes.
That'll be twenty-one.
We want to make sure that there is a library board member. They may end, no, that's, that's seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty.
I thought those were inclusive of who you were, who you were gonna look at for your two, okay.
I have twenty-six, and it's entirely possible that someone who's on the library board may get chosen by someone, and I think we should maybe look at those. But it doesn't have to be. Our fourteen could be people that we just feel like need to be on this board. That's why I started with one per council member.
Can I repeat the list? I've got to make sure I've got them correctly.
Certainly.
So we've got fourteen members that, two members each from council members, which, um, we'll have them fill out applications to, if they wanna identify if they're with a group or if they're from an underrepresented group, but those will really be up to you all. Two council members, the mayor, a library board member, a P and Z commission member, um, a handicap member of the community or someone associated with that community, two from the, a minimum of two from the Rio Vista neighborhood, chamber, Texas State, San Marcos River Foundation, and the downtown association.
Yep.
Okay.
That second group of people, can that be like part of our endeavor to, like, you get two people who are going to...
One of mine might be a library, the library board member.
True.
So it'll be at least seventeen, could be as many as twenty-six.
Okay.
This just follows the pattern of how we do appointments in San Marcos, Texas. Are we missing anybody?
I just hope we get the attendance. I hope we get the attendance to do it. And it's harder to get meetings, so yeah.
Okay. Anything else you need from us?
Before we go to timeline, can, can we back to the, we get to point two?
Yes.
And this is our endeavor.
And you're going to have a list because there will be publicity. Um, Ms. Trevino will open it up so that people will apply. And on that application, it tells us how long they've been in San Marcos. Again, tells us about them, what do you bring to this effort? They have the opportunity to do that, and the better they answer that, the more likely they are to be appointed, I'll just say is probably the case. So, when would, when would we start all of this, and what are you looking at? It's a deadline, because I was kinda surprised when you came up with thirty days, 'cause I thought it might be longer than that, so...
Oh, okay. Well, we recommended a minimum of thirty in order to really make sure we're reaching all members of the community, um, but we can absolutely go longer if you all would like.
Sixty's too long.
Forty-five?
Forty-five.
Split the...
You wanna get people with, you know, it's new, and hopefully the press will cover all of this, and we'll do a press release, I assume, and do what we do to advertise things, so...
Six weeks takes us to the beginning of November, so at least we don't get into the holidays. That was what I was starting to calculate.
Well, I have it done before the holidays.
Yeah.
Now, they may not meet until January, which is fine, but at least people get their mindset going.
Yeah.
The other thing, obviously, and this is just the season we're in. Do y'all want these before the election or after the election? Because that's gonna be a thing too, as far as, you know, if y'all, if y'all want whoever the council members are to do that at the time, or do you wanna do that before? So that's, it's just the season we're in, and y'all, you know, it's the elephant in the room that I just wanna understand from y'all's perspective what y'all wanna do there.
Turn on your microphone.
My preference would be before the election. We're better informed, and we can move forward.
I would like to wait on this. Um, I think a new city hall is one of the most important things this city is doing right now, so I would like to wait on it.
Okay, then we're have, gonna have to go with thirty days? Publicity needs to start tomorrow, or today after?
This week.
Absolutely. Publicity, this week to start. Uh, and Ms. Trevino, you can get, do that pretty quickly, okay? And then, the deadline to apply will be?
It'll be thirty days from when we post the application. We will, I don't have a calendar right in front of me, so, but yes, we're, I get the expediency. Why, then we would bring you all the applications at your next meeting.
We would, we would endeavor to have them back to you by the first meeting in November.
That's the earliest that it could be, but that's our goal. Okay, and appoint in first meeting in November. Okay. Are we ready to roll? We're ready to roll.
Okay. The only thing I will say, um, before we close this out, is I, I know that y'all have gotten the news that Ms. Caffrey is, is leaving us. Um, she was selected as a city manager for the community of Des Moines, Iowa.
Washington.
Des Moines, Washington.
It's an easy mistake to make.
Des Moines, Washington.
I need an even bigger coke than I was thinking.
Des Moines, Washington, so she will be leaving us, um, in early October. She is very much committed to wanting to make sure that we have a process and a good process going forward. We're still talking on staff what transition looks like. We still want this to move forward. We know this is an important project, and it will continue to move forward. So we will advise, once we get a transition plan in place, but just wanted to let y'all know. Also wanna thank Ms. Caffrey, because she's really done some great work here and gotten us on a great trajectory, so just wanted to mention that.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
And in the upcoming budget, we, we have money set aside for this as well.
Ask, ask her. All those plans are there. Okay, so, we have concluded this item. And I didn't need as many pages as I thought I would need. And so we are on to the consent agenda, the following ordinances, resolutions, and other items. Number two through nineteen may be acted upon by one motion. No separate discussion or action is necessary unless a council member pulls an item. I would like to pull ten and eighteen. Anybody else wanna pull something? Okay, then I would accept a motion to approve two through nine, eleven through seventeen, and nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gleason, seconded by Mr. Gonzalez. Ms. Trevino?
Okay, Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Scott and Ms. Garza, Mary Hewson?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
And Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes five to zero with two absent.
All right, then we will, um, as is our practice, we will, uh, put those aside until after our public hearing, so that brings us on to item twenty.
Holding a public hearing to receive comments for or against ordinance twenty twenty-four dash forty-six, creating a designated permit area under section eighty-two point one eight-nine of the San Marcos City Code, authorizing parking by permit only at all times for the area consisting of the west side of the six hundred block of Sturgeon Drive from River Road to Claire Street, amending the traffic register to reflect, apologies, such designated permit area including procedural provisions and declare an effective date, and consider approval of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash forty-six on the first of two readings.
Okay, presentation?
We have no presentation for this item, however, I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Pretty routine, we've done these before.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, and what was in the packet was, was very clear as to the need, so thank you. Okay. I will open the public hearing, and we have Ms. Capaletta who signed up online. I need to see if there's anyone in the room or in the lobby who wishes to speak about the parking on Sturgeon. Seeing no one in the building, we'll go to Ms. Capaletta. She's not online. Then I will close the public hearing, and I will await a motion on item twenty.
Motion to approve, ma'am.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gleason, seconded by Mr. Mendoza. Counsel, any questions, comments? We will vote. Ms. Trevino?
Mr. Scott, Ms. Garza, Mary Hewson?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
And Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero with two absent.
Okay, um, counsel, I believe I'm correct, and Ms. Hernandez will correct me if not. Somebody's got their...
Ms. Garza.
Oh, Ms. Garza's in. Oh, goody. But we can't hear you. Oh, that's right, you, your throat is not good right now, okay.
In her defense, she, uh, lost her voice cheering on the Texas State Pop-Tarts.
Okay, that's good. Uh, were you trying, were you, was your attempt to vote on the, um, yes, okay, she's got thumbs up. Okay, so, uh, Ms. Hernandez, I believe I need to move item twenty-three first. Is there annexation before the zoning? Okay, then, uh, Ms. Trevino, we'll go to item twenty-three.
Receive a stat presentation, hold a public hearing to receive comments for or against ordinance twenty twenty-four dash forty-nine, annexing into the city approximately fifty-one acres of land, including adjacent right-of-way generally located at the southern side of FM dash one-ten East McCarty Lane and the northern side of Old Bastrop Highway, approximately one thousand six hundred feet west of the intersection between Old Bastrop Highway and, um, SH dash one-twenty-three, case number AN dash twenty-four dash zero-seven, including procedural provisions and declare an effective date. And consider approval of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash forty-nine on the first of two readings.
Presentation, Ms. Hernandez.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Amanda Hernandez, Director of Planning and Development Services. The subject property is approximately fifty-one acres and is accompanied by two zoning change requests, which are the next two items on the agenda. The property is generally located between East McCarty Lane and Old Bastrop Highway. Water and wastewater will be provided by the City of San Marcos, and Blue Bonnet is the electric service provider. Next slide. There's a variety of surrounding zoning, including commercial, industrial, public, and character District Five. The property is near the high school and vacant or rural land that is proposed for a variety of uses. Next slide. This graphic shows the two zoning change requests, which you will consider next. The pink is for CM Commercial, and the green is for Character District Four for residential development. Please skip two slides ahead. Today, we're holding the public hearing for annexation and zoning. Next slide. Staff recommends approval as presented. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone in chambers or in the lobby who wishes to speak? Okay, uh, I show a John Kasek, a Bill Little. Are either of them online? My notes say in person. Okay, Charles Hager is the next one I will go to. And for a public hearing, we need your name and your address. Three minutes, no yielding of time, only speak once. You see there?
Hey, hey, my name's Charlie.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hey, my name's Charlie Hager. I'm with LJ Engineering. Uh, my address is seventy-five hundred Rialto Boulevard. And LJ and I am the project engineer, and we're just here to answer any questions and, you know, address any technical items that y'all may have. So feel free to reach out during the discussion if you guys need any further clarification on anything. Thank you.
Okay, good, thank you. Stand by if you would. And, uh, has Lisa Murray joined us? Okay. So, I will close the public hearing, and I await a motion on item twenty-three.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Mendoza.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Gleason. Are there any questions? Packet's pretty thorough. We'll vote, Ms. Trevino.
Ms. Garza? Thank you. Mary Hewson?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prather?
Aye.
And Mr. Scott, the motion passes five, I'm sorry, six to zero with one absent.
Okay, then we will go to item twenty-one.
Receive a stat presentation, hold a public hearing to receive comments for or against ordinance twenty twenty-four dash forty-seven, amending the official zoning map of the city in case number ZZ dash twenty-four dash zero-six by rezoning approximately thirty-six point nine-one acres of land generally located on the southern side of FM one-ten East McCarty Lane and the northern side of Old Bastrop Highway, approximately one thousand six hundred feet west of the intersection between Old Bastrop Highway and SH dash one-twenty-three from future development FD District to Character District dash four, CD four, or subject to consent of the owner, another less intense zoning district classification, including procedural provisions and declare an effective date, and consider approval of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash forty-seven on the first of two readings.
Presentation, Ms. Hernandez.
Amanda Hernandez, Director of Planning and Development Services. This is thirty-seven acres out of the previous annexation case. Next slide. The property is mostly vacant, surrounded again by the high school, rural residential, church, other vacant land which is currently being developed for commercial and industrial uses. Next slide. There are a variety of zoning districts in the vicinity, and some property remains in the city's ETJ. The proposed zoning is Character District Four. Next slide. Looking at the comprehensive plan, the property is within the East Village medium intensity zone where we anticipated growth in our comprehensive plan. Next slide. And CD four is a zoning district that we should consider in medium intensity. Next slide. The zoning district allows a variety of residential housing types, and the applicant is proposing at this time small multifamily and townhomes. Next slide. The property is not in an environmentally sensitive area. Next slide. Infrastructure requirements, including roadways, will be installed during the subdivision process. Next slide. Planning and zoning commission unanimously recommended approval of the request. They did ask about the little sliver of land that goes down to Rattler Road. It's part of the larger tract, but they're not proposing to use it for any type of ingress or egress. They anticipate it will probably just be a green space. Maybe we'll ask them to put a sidewalk in there so people can, you know, walk around or ride their bikes. But they recommended unanimous approval, and staff recommends approval as presented. That concludes my presentation.
All right. Thank you, and... I will open the public hearing and ask again, is there anyone in chambers or in the foyer who would like to speak? If not, I have John Kasek and Bill Little. Okay, and, uh, Charles Hager, again.
Hey, my name's Charlie Hager. I'm with LJ Engineering, seventy-five hundred Rialto Boulevard. Again, I, you know, I thought John and Bill were gonna be there. They might have hit a snag with traffic. But again, we're the civil engineer on the project, and just wanna thank Amanda for her team and everything they've done to help us get here. Um, we're presenting this to you guys with staff's recommendation. The, the owner and LJ have been very involved with the second city planning, and we think this is a great site for something that can help kinda kickstart that. Um, you know, help complete these master comprehensive plans, provide a lot of much-needed connectivity in the area, as well as provide a mixed use of commercial and residential options. And, um, yeah, if you guys have any questions during the review, just let me know. But yeah, just wanted to thank, um, City of San Marcos staff again for all their help to get us where we are today. Thanks.
All right, thank you. And with that, I will close the public hearing, and I will await a motion on item twenty-one.
Want to approve?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gonzalez, seconded by Mr. Mendoza. Any questions, comments, thoughts? Nice to see something a little different from the single-family homes and the apartments, so... Okay, Ms. Trevino, we'll vote.
Mary Hewson?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott and Ms. Garza. Thank you. Motion passes six to zero with one absent.
On to twenty-two.
Receive a stat presentation, hold a public hearing to receive comments for or against ordinance twenty twenty-four dash forty-eight, amending the official zoning map of the city in case number ZZ dash twenty-four dash zero-seven by rezoning approximately nine point nine acres of land generally located on the southern side of FM dash one-ten East McCarty Lane, approximately two thousand five hundred feet west of the intersection between FM dash one-ten and SH dash one-twenty-three from future development FD District to commercial CM District, or subject to consent of the owner, another less intense zoning district classification, including procedural provisions, and declare an effective date, and consider... And consider approval of ordinance 2024-48 on the first of two readings.
Ms. Hernandez, presentation.
Amanda Hernandez, Director of Planning and Development Services. This subject property is about 10 acres and it fronts on East McCarty Lane. Next slide. The property is currently vacant and is across the street from the city's Public Services Complex. Next slide. Zoning near this property is mostly industrial to the north with the proposed CD Four, which was the last item to the south. And the applicant is proposing CM Commercial at this location. Next slide. Again, we are in the East Village Medium Intensity Zone. Next slide. But because the CM Commercial District is a special district, on table 4.1, it says that Commercial is not preferred. While not preferred, we do look at a variety of factors when we're making our recommendation. And since the East Village is an area that calls for commercial, retail, and other type of activities, this actually is an appropriate zoning district in the area. Next slide. While the applicant doesn't have specific uses proposed at this time, they would be subject to the commercial uses allowed within the zoning district. Next slide. The property is not in an environmentally sensitive area. Next slide. Again, infrastructure will be required through the plating process. Next slide. Planning and zoning commission unanimously recommended approval and staff recommends approval as presented. And that concludes my presentation.
And discussion topics at P and Z?
Yes, ma'am. They were just asking if there would be an impact on the high school. We talked about how this would provide hopefully a variety of services for those who do attend the high school. And there would be infrastructure that would allow those students to access from the high school over to East McCarty, where we do have some wider sidewalks for transportation purposes. And then we also talked about that not preferred on item, on table 4.1.
Okay. All right, thank you. I will open the public hearing. This is on item 22. Anyone in chambers or in the foyer wanting to speak on this? And did any of our other folks join us, Ms. Trevino?
Maybe.
Okay, uh, so, Mr. Hager.
Mayor, I have one question.
Wait, I'm in the public hearing.
Oh, I thought you closed the public hearing. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Mr. Hager.
Hey, Charlie Hager again with LJ, 7500 Rialto Boulevard. So, instead of just doing this as all character district, which does allow for, you know, various retail and neighborhood mixed use, we wanted to present this to guarantee that any development that goes in has a commercial and a mixed-use side to it. And really, the goal here was something that would kind of divert trips and allow people to go to a community market to get essentials, be able to have a coffee shop, to go open a laptop and get some work done. But we did it this way to make sure that no matter what happened, that there was no question that there would be some mixed use in this area, which based on our talks with a lot of the community members, there's a huge need for it. And, um, the district that we're proposing is right of against McCarty Lane. We think it's gonna go really well with the character district zoning, as well as everything else we're doing as far as impacting the high school. That's why it's as far away as we can make it. We want it to be along McCarty. And, um, you know, if you have any other questions, just let me know when this comes up. And I, I did just get a text from the owners that they got stuck in really bad traffic. I guess there was a wreck, so I'll do my best to speak for them.
Okay. All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? If so, please approach the podium. We will need your name and your address.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's David Bockrath, 201 Ridge Way Drive. Uh, I wasn't planning on speaking on this, but I do ride my bicycle, excuse me, with the San Marcos Cycling Friends up and down McCarty on Tuesdays and Thursdays routinely. So I'd ask that any development there takes into account the bike lanes and making sure that remains accessible. Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Katie Bockrath, 201 Ridge Way Drive. Another consideration to think about when zoning these additional residential and commercial developments along McCarty and 35 particularly, is the potential for additional expansions on 35 and additional traffic in the area. So I would ask that you guys in the future, planning, make sure you're considering that sort of growth and additional traffic. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? I will close the public hearing and... Ms. Hernandez, do we have a response on the, the questions about bicycle, bicycle lanes, et cetera, on the new roads?
Sure. So we would not be changing anything that's on McCarty that's existing with this development, but the development will be required to install new roadways. And all of our roadways are complete streets in some form or fashion. So they would have sidewalks, maybe wider sidewalks. We'll see if there's a need for a greenway or a hike and bike trail. We'll look at all of that through the subdivision process.
Thank you. Okay, counsel, I am looking for a motion on item 22.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Close the public hearing, didn't I?
Huh?
Close the public hearing, didn't I?
You did.
Okay, all right. I'm sorry, who made the motion? Mr. Mendoza?
I seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Gleason. That was to approve. Are there any other questions?
Yeah, I had, I had one. As far as the connectivity into East McCarty or 110 there, are they gonna be, is there any restrictions on how many ingresses and egresses they can have in and out of that? Are we gonna require, um, is there any stipulations on ingress and egress coming out of the commercial or the residential onto 110?
Yes, there will be regulations. We have required driveway spacing in our development code. And then also, I have to be honest, I don't know if that segment right there is text dot or if it's ours. So if it's a text dot road, they would have to go through the text dot roadway process. But what I anticipate is that there will be at least one road connection that goes through. And you can kind of see that on our thoroughfare plan slide. It shows a green road that connects to McCarty. So that would provide an additional public thoroughfare. That lot will probably get one other driveway, maybe. We're also dealing with the challenges of it being separated at that point. That's right where the separation splits. So, you know, engineering will be looking at any potential conflicts of making sure that vehicles aren't trying to turn left and crossing over medians. There are just a lot of considerations that come in when we are going through that driveway review. But they will be able to have access either on FM-110 or the new roadway that gets put in.
I was really more concerned about us having a restriction on how many they could have.
Yeah.
Right, like if there's gonna be three or four of them or, I'm just, as, you know, 110 is, is gonna be a real, it's a real addition to the community. I just have concerns of how many additional impacts we're gonna have on all this extra development we're gonna see. It's pretty, it's pretty easy to get through there right now and, uh, but I hadn't seen the thoroughfare map.
Yes, and there's also, they have an indicative site plan. So they gave us just something very basic that's in the packet. It's in the slide from the, the slide deck from the previous item. It actually shows one driveway on the very north end of the commercial and another driveway. It may be, it may be a street, it may be a driveway or an internal drive that's kind of on the far south end. So maybe three additional access points. I will say those are not yet approved. They'll still have to go through that subdivision review process and driveway review, if it's specifically a driveway, to make sure that we have the appropriate spacing. And because of the speed limit and those types of things on this classification of roadway, you get more limits the larger the classification of the road.
Good, thank you.
And may I just say, happy days for commercial out there. Happy days in dedicated commercial, not buried in something else that may end up being apartments again. So yes, happy day. Any other questions, comments, thoughts? Not?
Hey, can I say, this is Charlie again. Can I say anything on that or is it too late?
I give you a couple of minutes.
Well, I was just gonna say, you know, our goal is to very much limit driveways and access and really complete those, those comprehensive planned streets and have everything go off of those streets. We're also proposing like large 50-foot, um, open space with trails along the boundary of this project. So as far as like cyclists and pedestrians are concerned, we, our goal is to really integrate this into the overall plan of having a very walkable second city center and, and connect everything and really have all trips kind of go to main points of access. And then there's also this big existing median. So if there is a secondary dri, or, you know, we're gonna have like the main street come through, that'll be where 90% of people are getting in and out. And we might have a ride-in, ride-out at the end of the commercial zone. But that would primarily just be for people exiting and fire. And we will complete a transportation impact analysis that will likely warrant a turn lane. So anyone turning will be able to get off the road without slowing down traffic. So I just want to remind everyone that we will go through every single step needed to make sure that this has no impact and does not increase the level of service of the area. And if anything, we leave it way better than we found it.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, anything else? Ms. Trevino, I believe we're ready to vote.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Sorry. Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott. Ms. Garza. Thank you. Mayor Hewson.
Uh, aye.
Motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Okay, on to item 24.
Receive, receive a stat presentation, hold a public hearing to receive comments for or against ordinance 2024-40, adopting an operating budget in the amount of $342,578,537 for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2024 and ending September 30, 2025, authorizing certain adjustments to the budget with the approval of city manager approving fiscal year 2024-2025 capital improvements program projects in the amount of $84,855,000, including procedural provisions and declare an effective date. And consider approval of ordinance 2024-40 on the second of two readings.
Okay, counsel, since this is budget and we have several budget items, y'all will remember from years past that there's legal things that I have to say and at certain points that I have to say it. And this is one of them. This is the second public hearing on the city's proposed fiscal year 2024 through 2025 annual budget, which begins on October 1 of 2024 and extends through September 30 of 2025. The first public hearing on the budget was held on September 3 of 2024. And city council has considered the budget during several recent work sessions. The proposed budget has been on file in the city clerk's office as required by state law and on the city's website since August 16 of 2024. Ms. Reyes.
My microphone, sorry.
I've discovered a light tap sometimes works better than pressing it hard.
Trying to wrestle with it. And so we're, we're at the home stretch tonight, uh, second reading of the tax rate. And one of the things that we will talk about today and, and Mr. Locke is gonna talk about is just that, um, we did get a clarification on our tax rate calculation. And there was something that was double counted when we received the number and calculation from our, um, the assessor collector. And so what that means is, is that basically the, the rate that you will be approving falls below the no new revenue rate. So that means that counsel is not increasing that normal statement that you would give, saying that you're gonna increase taxes by a certain amount. So it does not affect the proposed budget, but it does, uh, it is in favor of our taxpayers. So, Mr. Locke will kind of carry you through and give you more detail, but, uh, just wanted to let you, uh, mayor and counsel know as well as the public.
Okay. Good luck.
Thank you, mayor and counsel. John Locke, Finance Director. We opened up by looking at the budget calendar and the, and the journey that we've been on to, uh, to write here, where counsel will consider the budget adoption and the tax rate setting. It began in January with the city council visioning. And at that two-day session, one of the items that city council did for the budget was prioritize a lot of the programs and services for the upcoming fiscal year '25 budget. Those were categorized in the A, B, and C. And staff used those as there was available capacity to incorporate into the fiscal year '25 budget. In, in the following month, city council held a budget policy workshop. And at that workshop, um, council provided additional guidance and framework on what staff would use to build the fiscal year '25 budget. The following month in March, city council held a public hearing and adopted that budget policy statement. That budget policy statement is again what the city manager used to make sure that staff was following, uh, city council's direction and building the fiscal year '25 budget. The next month in April was the first time that we presented the budget to the Neighborhood Commission. Staff presented the, um, the budget policy, a condensed version of that presentation to the Neighborhood Commission. And then in May, uh, city council held their first budget workshop. At that workshop, we went over some revenue trends that, that we were seeing and some challenges that, that we thought we were gonna have in the upcoming year based on where property tax and sales tax were coming in. And at the June budget workshop, city council received a draft budget and, uh, of all the major operating funds. And then at August, the, the proposed budget was finally submitted to council. And at that same meeting, city council set the maximum proposed tax rate. The following day, um, there was a shortened version of that presentation that was given to the Neighborhood Commission to let them know what was included in the fiscal year '25 budget. And, um, that takes us to last week where there were a total of five public hearings held on the budget. One on the budget, one on the tax rate, and three on the proposed utility rate adjustments. And that brings us to this evening where there will be three more public hearings. One on the budget, one on the tax rate, and one on the fee schedule. So in total, there will have been nine public hearings held across the nine-month process that it's taken to adopt our fiscal year '25 budget. This next slide will show an overview of the fiscal year '25 budget. Moving from left to right, it has the name of the fund, the beginning fund balance, then the proposed revenues, the proposed expenses, and the ending fund balance. I'd like to just note that, um, the ending fund balance for all the funds meet the fund balance policy statement that city council set. And the total, uh, proposed expense budget for fiscal year '25 is $342 million. Next slide, please. So at, at this time, the city council would hold a public hearing on the budget. It, it'll be a record vote on the budget. And after the public hearing, there is a motion that, that must be read as follows up on the screen. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, so... Mr. Locke said it is now time to do the public hearing. So I will open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone in chambers, in the lobby, outside who might be able to hear me, who wishes to speak on this item. Do we have anyone online? Okay, so then I will close the public hearing. And for anyone who wishes to make the motion, notice that the exact wording that we need to hear from you is on the screen for your convenience.
I move to approve ordinance 2024-40, approving the operating and capital improvement program budgets for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2024 and ending September 30, 2025.
I'll second that motion.
All right, motion by Mr. Gleason, seconded by Mr. Prather. Thank you both. Are there any questions? We have had multiple budget workshops and we've expressed our preference and staff has said, okay, and they took that information and worked with it and have brought us a budget, a balanced budget. Our budget's always balanced, because that's what we have to do. We don't get print money.
Unfortunately.
Any questions?
Just a comment.
Yes, sir.
This budget, it will increase public safety by adding more personnel to our police department. It will start the process to build a new city hall, make investments in our parks and infrastructure, all while maintaining the current tax rate. Congratulations. This is a good budget.
Yes, thank you. Several years ago, we said we need to get caught up with our police and fire. Staff took that and they have worked it in. And we are almost there. I think we have all the positions we need at the police department. They just need to fill them. But that gets us up to the report from 2020.
2020 and 2021.
2020, 21.
But you know... We're still on a plan going forward.
We're closer than we have been in such a long time. And, uh, it is allowing us to have more on our homeless outreach team, more in the mental health officers. It is, uh, it's helping us reach a lot of goals, um, in what we have. So, let's vote.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott. Ms. Garza.
Oh, I'm sorry, she has her hand up.
Oh.
Ms. Garza, did you have a question or something? I'm sorry, I missed your hand up.
Just an explanation as to why I'm gonna vote no next. I'll tell you.
I'm sorry, I didn't follow you, ma'am. Oh, okay.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Then, uh, we'll continue on, yes.
Yes, Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes five to one with one absent.
Okay. On to item... Okay. On to item twenty-five.
Consider.
Hold on. It's one of those things, I gotta say something, and it's a little different from the script I gave you, so my apologies. Item twenty-five is not a public hearing, but we're taking it up now before the tax rate item, which is a public hearing, is required by state law. State law requires a separate action to ratify the property tax revenue reflected in the budget when more revenue will be raised from property taxes than in the previous fiscal year. That's correct, okay. But this item is not a public hearing item. I'm sorry, Ms. Trevino. Now, now let's read what it was I was just talking about.
Consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash one eighty-seven R, ratifying the property tax revenue increase in the budget for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty-four through September thirty, twenty twenty-five, and declare an effective date.
Okay. Mr. Locke.
Yes, thank you again, mayor and city council. As you pointed out, mayor, this is required by state law. If a, if a budget is going to generate more property tax revenue than the previous year's budget, then city council must ratify the property tax revenue in that budget. The total tax revenue increase is two point two million. Of that amount, the new property value that was added to the roll generated two point six million dollars. I know that math doesn't work out, and that's because some of the reappraisal growth went down, and so the new property that was added to the roll made up for that, and in total, it was two point two million dollars that was added. And this is required even though the tax rate is not increasing.
Okay.
That concludes my presentation, and the motion that is needed for this item is on the screen.
Yeah, and this is not a public hearing, so whoever wants to make this motion, your script is on the screen.
I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash one eighty-seven R, ratifying the property tax revenue increase in the budget for the fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty-four and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Gleason, seconded by Mr. Prather, and council discussion questions. Again, we've discussed this over hours. We will vote.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott, Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mayor Houston.
Aye.
And Ms. Garza. Yes, okay, thank you, and Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes six to zero with one absent.
All right, and our next item is twenty-six.
Receive a staff presentation, hold a public hearing to receive comments for or against ordinance twenty twenty-four dash forty-one, setting the tax rate for the twenty twenty-four tax year at sixty point thirty cents on each one hundred dollars of taxable value of real property that is not exempt from taxation, levying taxes for the use and support of the municipal government of the city for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty-four and ending September thirty, twenty twenty-five, providing a sinking fund for the retirement of the bonded debt of the city, including procedural provisions, and declare an effective date, and consider approval of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash forty-one on the second of two readings.
Okay. I need to say this. City council approved the tax rate ordinance on first reading on September third of twenty twenty-four. This agenda item is for the city council to consider the tax rate ordinance on the second reading and actually adopt the twenty twenty-four tax rate. Presentation.
There are two components to the tax rate, the operations and the debt components. The operations are things that fund, things like public safety when you think of police and fire, as well as quality of life initiatives like parks and recreation and the library. That component of the tax rate is forty-five cents, and you can see the amount of budgeted revenue on the screen is thirty-eight point eight million dollars. The debt component of the tax rate funds the capital improvement program, so those are the major projects. You think of streets or building renovations. That component of the tax rate is fifteen point three cents, and the budgeted revenue for that is thirteen point two million dollars. So in total, the total tax rate is sixty point three cents. Next slide, please. Ms. Reyes mentioned in her opening remarks about a change in the no new revenue and voter approval tax rate. This, this change was, was due to, as Ms. Reyes pointed out, a number that was double counted, and so with the revisions to that, what this slide shows is the before and after of each of those tax rates. So the new, no new revenue rate was fifty-nine point nine six cents prior to the change, and afterwards, it's sixty point eight cents. So you can see the difference is it went up about eight tenths of a cent. Our current and proposed tax rate did not change. It stayed at sixty point three cents, and the voter approval rate went from seventy point three to seventy-one point three cents, so it increased by a penny. Next slide, please. This was in the original presentation, and this is, the state law requires certain things to occur if the tax rate that the city council is considering is above the no new revenue rate. So you see that we have lined through all of that because it is no longer required. Next slide, please. This is the revised procedure that we will use for setting the tax rate. Since our, the proposed tax rate does not exceed the no new revenue rate, all that is required is a vote to adopt the tax rate. And again, the no new revenue rate is sixty point eight cents, and our current tax rate and proposed tax rate for fiscal year twenty-five is sixty point three. Next slide, please. So after the public hearing, there'll be a vote on the tax rate, and there's a motion that is required is on the screen, and that concludes my presentation.
Can I clarify one thing, John, just to make sure for the public and for the council? Is that really what this means is when we say that we're below the no new revenue rate? That means that we, the rate that we are proposing means we're bringing in less revenue than we did this current fiscal year?
On properties taxed in both years.
Property taxes.
Yes, ma'am.
In both years.
In both years.
Got it.
So that's what that means, is that we are running a budget, we're proposing a budget that is less revenue for property taxes in the current fiscal year for the upcoming fiscal year. So that's, I just want to make sure that that's clear to the city council and to the public to understand that.
What about the added properties?
Any new value is not included in that calculation. It's just for properties that are taxed in both fiscal years.
But we are bringing in tax dollars on new property.
Yes, ma'am. That, the property tax ratification resolution that we just passed, that two point two million dollars, that's the, that is, represents all that.
Right.
Property tax from the new value being added.
Great. I think I've gone through all the things that I need to say. Presentation, I need to have a hold a public hearing. I'm sorry, did you have anything else?
Quick, is this one of the first times we've had a no new revenue budget?
Yes, sir. So we went back to twenty thirteen. That's when we had the information. In fiscal year twenty twenty-two, our tax rate was below the no new revenue rate. That was the year that the Blanco Vista Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone closed, and we think that that played into that. But other than that year, yes, this is the only year that we've adopted a tax rate.
A no new revenue, this is a really big deal. I mean.
It is.
Cities tout themselves when they're able to say, we pass a no new revenue budget. So.
Yes, sir.
Congratulations. And let's get that word out there that we were able to pass a budget like that.
It's even below it.
It's even below it.
That's the deal that's unheard of, is because usually you're at least trying to bring in an equal amount to what you brought in the prior year, or even below it. Right? So. The taxpayer is who's benefiting here, yes.
And, and one of the reasons is because of the growth. Let's be honest, it's the growth and the expansion of the additional things coming on the rolls, that we have the additional revenue to fund the budget that we need to while not having to put the additional burden on the existing homeowners previously, or existing property owners previously.
Yeah.
Okay, and again, for your convenience, whichever council member wishes to make the motion, we have the script up here.
Mayor, don't we need a public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry. We got into discussion. I was thinking, okay, we're gonna have the public hearing. I will open the public hearing. If you wish to speak, yeah, we'll need your name and your address. Three minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is David Bakar. Two-one-one Ridgeway Drive. I appreciate the fact you're doing a no new revenue, but I believe you might be patting yourselves on the back a little too much. I look in back at my property over the past five years, I've had an eighteen percent compounded growth rate for that period. My taxes went from three thousand dollars in twenty nineteen to over six thousand dollars in twenty twenty-three. So congratulations on no new for the next year, but this is off of the backs of everybody that's been here for that time. Additionally, the bike lane or the rideshare program, the free taxi around downtown, have y'all looked at the numbers on that? This is the type of thing we're funding. Those thirty-five dollars a mile for transportation, thirty-one dollars a ride, that can go, get no further than outside the downtown area, just a little bit. So, just wanted to say that because my taxes are killing me.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Anyone online that, okay, so I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I just wanted to clarify one thing with the comment that you had about the rideshare program. The money for that rideshare program did come from the tours, the downtown tours, and didn't come out of the general fund, and, and that money is the tax money that came from downtown money. So that program was funded by downtown money only, just to be clear about it.
Why was that money not able to go into the regular?
I can explain that later, but.
I just wanted to clarify.
We're gonna have a break in just like a couple of minutes. I'd be happy to explain it to you, sir. Okay, so, do we have a volunteer?
I move to approve the ordinance twenty twenty-four forty-one, setting the tax rate for twenty twenty-four tax year at sixty thirty cents on each hundred dollars of taxable value.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Mendoza, seconded by Mr. Prather. Any other questions about the budget? Well, Ms. Trevino, we'll vote.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott, Ms. Garza? Yes, thank you. Mayor Houston.
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Okay, and we will, are you here for twenty-seven?
Yeah, the, the public hearing for the schedule of fees.
Okay, so council, we're gonna do item twenty-seven, and then we'll take a break. So, Ms. Trevino.
Receive a staff presentation, hold a public hearing to receive comments for or against resolution twenty twenty-four dash one eighty-eight R, approving the schedule of fees for fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty-four and ending September thirty, twenty twenty-five, reauthorizing building permit fees, including procedural provisions, and declare an effective date, and consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash one eighty-eight R.
Thank you again, mayor and city council. The schedule of fees have historically been included in the budget adoption, and the schedule of fees are effective for all of next fiscal year, October one, twenty twenty-four through September thirtieth to twenty-five. The legislature passed House bill nineteen twenty-two, nineteen twenty-two during the twenty twenty-three legislative session, and that bill took effect on January first of twenty twenty-four. What that bill requires is the reauthorization of building permit fees, and it requires that city council hold a public hearing on the reauthorization of the building permit fees and to reauthorize the fees by vote. This is, must be done at least once every ten years, and if it is not, then the fee is considered to be abolished after that tenure period. Next slide, please. Rather than just having a public hearing on the building permit fee itself, we were bringing the whole fee schedule to, to be included in the fees, in the public hearing. There are no changes to the fee schedule except for the utility rate changes that city council held a separate public hearing for. That was with electric, water, wastewater, and resource recovery. And after the vote, after the public hearing, the motion to approve this resolution is on the screen. That concludes my presentation.
Okay. Public hearing? Anyone in chambers, foyer, anywhere? Trevino, do we have anyone online who wishes to speak for, against, or about this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Can we do that, or do we need to?
Oh, sorry.
This one is so moved, is okay?
No, I, I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash one eighty-eight R, approving the schedule of fees and reauthorizing building permit fees.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Prather, seconded by Mr. Gleason to approve. I've got a couple of questions, and I put them on the message board. Are we not doing the incremental cost of living in between? I know we do every three years, and sometimes we miss it, but I think we're doing it more regularly now. But at one time, we were increasing them a little bit, and then we were doing the full review every three years to make sure that we were into some type of cost recovery. Are we not doing the incremental anymore?
At this time, there isn't a set amount that we are increasing those rates automatically on an annual basis. That is something that Ms. Reyes discussed with me during this budget process, that we need to look at that next fiscal year, so that, you know, with the inflationary costs with everything going up, that these rates are at least keeping pace with that.
That, that was, that was the idea, and then we ended up with things one point seventeen cents, and so we decided at least round up to the nearest dollar, quarter, or something. I did not know that we had quit doing that, and I wonder when, and I wonder why, but okay. So you're, you're gonna look at doing it.
We'll look at it in the future, because I think where it deviated from that, mayor, is when it started being like a third of the fees that we would look at every three years. And so that, that's really, I think, when we stopped doing that, because I'll tell you, like, for example, the building permit fees, one of the things that they would say is that, okay, where are people then within the process? And so it created this bouncing ball effect for, for stuff like the development permit fees, and so, and then also, it takes a lot for them to have to update all of that stuff in their systems and on the web, so that was a big thing. So it was like, if it's every three years, then that helps to make sure that those things are taken into account.
Leaving money on the table.
Well, it's just being, it's catching up every three years, if we look at it that way.
Okay. I have a question, and this is probably from, maybe from Ms. Hernandez, on, there's been a question recently about, specifically about the alcohol conditional use permit fee. And so I looked for it, and I didn't see it, but I, tell me if it's there, or is it, I see one for conditional use permits in general, so are they all the same?
Yes, ma'am.
Fee. Okay, has, has it always been that way?
Yes, ma'am. We've always had the same fee for new and renewal specifically, and then we added a nonprofit fifty percent off a few years ago, and it really is because the application fee is the time and money it takes to process the application, and it doesn't take any longer or any more energy or notice to process an alcohol CUP than it does a use CUP, for example.
Okay, this, like, some of the ones I'm thinking of is where a business wanted to move their parking from one side to the back side of the building, and that's the example. We don't have a whole lot of CUPs that we see.
Correct. We treat alternative compliance the same way, which would have been the parking.
Right.
So we treat them all kind of the same because they follow a similar process, and everything really is the same for staff, just different code sections that we review.
And is the fee the same?
Yes.
Okay. That's what, you're right, that's what I was remembering. Okay, so that was a question that I have. Council, do y'all want to make that a different fee because it's a different, free to catch, should I say? This is a resolution, so this is a one reading.
I don't know if it makes a difference that there is a CUP subcommittee that may be discussing this.
There's a CUP committee.
I'm sorry, a CUP committee that may be discussing this.
Then I think I will leave it there, and if y'all come back with something.
Thank you.
And Ms. Garza's thumbs up on that. So, okay, that works for me. Anything else? There's some clarifications on the schedule. I had some questions, because sometimes there's a fee, and it doesn't say what it is. Is it per instance? Is it per year, whatever? And the information that we have back is that, we'll, we'll get some things in that column, because some of it really was confusing, especially the kitchen thing with the activity center rooms, et cetera. So that will be helpful. That won't change. That won't change the fee, so we can go ahead and 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 take care of these today. That can happen at another time. So if you're ready to vote, Ms. Trevino, we will vote on the fee schedule.
Mr. Scott, Ms. Garza. Is that a thumbs down?
She's a thumbs down. That's enough.
Okay. Mayor Houston?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Gleason?
Yes.
Mr. Mendoza?
Yes.
Mr. Prather?
Yes.
Okay, the motion to five, two one, and then one absent. It passes.
Okay, we are at exactly seven thirty. We generally have a break every ninety minutes, so this closes the public hearing portion of our program. When we come back, we will do ten and eighteen, then we will pick up with item twenty-eight. At seven forty-two, we are on item ten, pulled from the consent agenda, Ms. Trevino.
Consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash one seventy-seven R revising the city's public events grants policy to, among other things, specify grant types, funding sources, eligibility, restrictions, and required documents, and declare an effective date.
Okay, first, we will need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Gleason, seconded by Mr. Mendoza. On the message board, I asked when we were talking about this last time is what can we kick in on the deal? Can we kick in some space that would be vacant otherwise? And so I'm asking where we can be with that. Um, I am not asking for for storage space for folks. It was just vacant space, and if it's available, and everybody's got, you know, more than thirty days to to book that space. So what are the chances that we can do something? This is not for everybody. This is not for all nonprofits. This is our contribution. We say we want to be an arts community and be a vibrant arts community, and I'm looking to see if we can provide some space that would likely be vacant anyway as part of that process in addition to cash grants.
So what staff would like to do, if if the council's amenable, is to put together a process based on what you're talking about and make sure that we have that process together so that we can be more intentional with it, because the concern is really just in regard to making sure all the administrative things are taken into consideration.
We need some rules on it and some some guardrails, and I'm fine with that.
So that that that's really what what we would like to propose for, and it would be for twenty-six.
I would have to be because we're taking applications and things now. It would, uh. That doesn't mean we couldn't try to do something in between, but to be part of the grant process. I I see that it would. Where are y'all on this? Okay, so we will, um, will we get that plan before next year? Maybe ninety days? Microphone, please, because we all want to hear you.
Rebecca Ibarra, Director of Destination Services. Um, so we had a meeting with Parks and Rec staff in regards to the facility, so what we would like is some time to come up with a plan and process. Um, the. We post for, um, the open date for applications would be about July of next year, so, um, maybe April, May to have something back to you where we can really focus on it because and between all of our other projects.
Maybe end of March?
Yes, we can do that.
All right. That'll be fine. So there's nothing to amend on this one. Counsel, do y'all have anything on this one? If not, we'll just go ahead and vote, Mr. Trevino.
Ms. Garza? Thank you. Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prather? And Mr. Scott? The motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. And item eighteen?
Consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash one eighty-five R approving a public hearing regarding the reissu- issuance, oh my God, sorry, of revenue bonds in a principal amount not to exceed twenty-five million five hundred and fifty, fifty thousand to be reissued by New Hope Cultural Education Facilities Finance Corporation for a residential senior living project known as a Vias of San Xavier Senior Residences and located at twenty-six twenty-one South IH thirty-five in San Marcos and declare an effective date.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Mendoza. And the reason why I pulled this is that we were approving a public hearing. There is a date and a method, but we weren't telling anybody about it in this packet that I could find. So I'm going to announce now that it, this public hearing is going to be a phone-in, and it is at ten AM on September thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. You call this toll-free number one eight seven seven eight five three five two five seven with an ID number of six oh one three eight three two four five four and conference code fifty-five eight oh six eight. And with that, I'm through with this one. It just seemed the right thing to do. Ms. Trevino will vote.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott and Ms. Garza? Okay, the motion passes six to zero with one absent.
All right, thank you very much. Now, back to item, I think we're on twenty-eight.
Consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash one eighty-nine R approving a one-year state-use contract with Easter Seals Central Texas as certified through West Work West, a state purchasing cooperative for vegetation, litter control, and landscape maintenance in the estimated amount of one million four hundred and thirty-two thousand seven hundred and two dollars and fifty-four cents, authorizing city manager her designate to execute this agreement on behalf of the city and declare an effective date.
Okay, looking for a motion to start our conversation.
Motion to approve?
Motion by Mr. Mendoza, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gonzalez. Um, do y'all have any questions? I had a bunch, um, but they were on the message board, and so, um. What I was trying to figure out is we've we've got multiple folks doing cleaning. We've got this, and then we've got downtown, and we've got people that are doing downtown, and then we've got parks people doing stuff, and I was just trying to figure out who did what, and I assume that y'all have y'all have gone through to make sure there's no no overlap, and you're making sure that there's no gaps. So, Ms. Tamites, thank you.
Amy Tamites, Community Enhancement Initiative's manager. Yes, we have made sure we're not overlapping, but we're making sure we are not having any gaps. And then for the past two to three years, just so you're aware, all the different departments have been going through everything that has been historical and removing what is not the city's responsibility, trying to bring this down, but at the same time, when you start seeing some increases, the city is purchasing more properties or annexing things, and so we're having to have to adjust and include those in them. So we will hopefully, by the end of this fiscal year, have a very tight mowing map that we're able to then get some really good numbers on.
Right. Well, it seems like y'all are really heading down the right path, and after I saw the explanation here, that I it looks to me like things are more clear now as to who's doing what.
Yes, it's getting better.
Yes, and I was also looking to see exactly what does cleaning mean, and I think we've got that now.
Yes, and we'll be clearing cleaning up that language as well to be a little more identifiable on what we're actually doing.
Yes.
In inheriting that monster has been fun.
But thank you for what you and your department, Mr. Carr, all of you do, because it's a monumental task, and so thank you.
Thank you.
And and one thing with the growth and stuff, you know, Mr. Gonzalez, as well as Mr. Meagle are working with Ms. Tamites, Ms. Ibarra, and others to try to really make sure that we're getting a kind of a downtown, not even a downtown, but a a planting.
Design pattern, but just for landscaping.
Just for landscaping and 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 so that we can make sure that there there's consistency, but also, as she was talking about in regard to new areas that are coming in, really tracking that so that as we come to you and we know that we have to increase stuff, y'all, we can be able to tell you that it's directly tied to having to add this, 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 and this on so that y'all y'all have that, and you can then communicate those things back out.
Well, you know, we don't get fiscal notes on a lot of stuff that we're asked to make a decision on, and I haven't complained about it because I hadn't really thought about it that way. But yes, I think now that, okay, if y'all want to do this, that's okay, but here's what it's gonna cost, here's what we're gonna have to do, and I think that's going to be a really good thing that will help us. We we might make the same decision as we would have otherwise, but at least we know
Right.
what the impact is on you, the budget, et cetera, and y'all know from the get-go instead of.
So we can start tying those dots, connecting those dots for you, you know, in regard to that, because it is. I mean, there's a lot of things that we take on that we're like, okay, we just do it, and we try to make it work, and it doesn't always, we don't always lay that out for you.
All right.
And I will add that all the departments are working better now together, communicating projects that are coming up that they may not have even done yet, so we can make sure we're getting things into a future mowing map, mowing contract or something like that, just so we're making sure we're not, things aren't falling down the cracks.
Right. All right, thank you very much. Counsel, any other questions, thoughts?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, light touch, I know, not gentle, just I I consistently say just how proud I am and how important this department is, so thank you so much for beautifying the city, whether we notice it or not. It makes a huge difference to maintain those little things that nobody really quite pays attention to, so thank you.
Yeah.
So very much for y'all's efforts.
And as we get into, I'm just gonna say greenery, that's easier to maintain, is gonna be great. Okay, Ms. Trevino, we'll vote.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott, Ms. Garza? Thank you. Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero with one absent.
All right, on to item twenty-nine.
Consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash one ninety R approving an on-call professional services agreement with Lockwood, Andrews, and Newman, Inc. to provide engineering services for the Purgatory Creek improvements Phase One project in amount not to exceed three million two hundred and eighty-one thousand seven hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirty-five cents, authorize city manager her designate to execute the agreement on behalf of the city and declare an effective date.
Looking for a motion?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Mr. Mendoza.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gleason to approve, I assume. Thank you. Questions, concerns, thoughts?
So, the the last time we they did some improvements to this area, you know, they added in, it's not a trail, but there's like a concrete pathway, I think it's an axis path, and then, you know, enhanced greenery, trees are planted, there's a concrete channel. So what, because, you know, this is gonna be a substantial project, forty million dollars, is this more enhancement for flood control? Just give me the, you know.
Sure, Sean Condor, Director of Engineering and Cal리 improvement. So we we talked about this a little bit in the work session last week, it has a good summary, so if you get a chance, for those listening online, you could pull it, but basically, it's a natural channel restoration project. We're removing approximately ninety homes from the floodplain, so we're gonna regrade the channel, make it wider. It'll be a natural channel, there will be a low-profile concrete channel lining at the bottom, but for the most part, it's gonna look natural, it's gonna look green, uh, it will have trails along the entire, uh, improvements, and this is really just for the Phase One. As you know, there's two phases, but this is the one that's gonna be included in the grant application, which we have high hopes for in the next three to six months to hear back on, and so we're getting this agreement in place to have us ready to go. If we do get that green light, then we can move on it.
Awesome, but instead of a concrete channel, it'll be like stone or something a little more natural looking?
Mm-hmm, yes, there'll be a concrete line channel.
Yeah.
You know, the bottom, I don't know how wide it is, and the consultants here in the crowd, too, if you really want to get into those details, but it's gonna look natural, um, and there won't be a big wide V-channel concrete like you see next to highways on on like a thirty-five in front of the old Kentucky Fried Chicken, so it'll look like that.
It's an awesome opportunity to put a a green belt right in the middle of our town, so looking forward to it. Very cool.
Well, and to me, this is also one of those things for connectivity all the way to Purgatory Park, right, and because there's lacking some access and connectivity on trails there, so I'm looking forward to that being done.
Mr. Mendoza?
Thank you, Mayor. This is actually, I guess, a question for the city manager. Just random, why, I've always wanted to ask this question, I have the chance to, that you're not allowed to, you can make this decision while it stays under that amount of money? Why such a specific amount? Why wouldn't you just say like three point two or three point three? Just randomly asking that.
Can we take that?
Yes.
Sure, it's what we do when we have a consultant, we we have them estimate the total level of effort we think it'll be to get the project from start to finish, and it's just, it's a multiplication exercise of their hourly rates, time, the hours on per task.
Okay.
We could around it.
It's so specific on these numbers. Thank you.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Oh, thank you. My question is, on Purgatory Creek, there be behind the Armstead Arm Apartments and Sinus Street, there's a creek, and it's builds up with water in certain areas and it stays stagnant for a while. Is that gonna resolve that problem as well?
It will have some locations that will hold water. It's called, I'm gonna ask Laura to come up and help me on this one, because this this is getting real technical, and she's she's the expert on the natural channel design because there will be some standing water.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for your question. So as we mentioned, the goal of the project is a flood mitigation project first and foremost, but we are gonna be coming in with a natural channel design. Natural channels do have pool run sequences, so there will be areas that will pool like a natural channel would, but the idea is that these would not be longstanding stagnation. I know that y'all have been combating some of that stagnant water on Purgatory Creek already. One big benefit of this project is that we will be raising a lot of the low-water crossings, such as CM Allen and, um, Jackman, and so now those roadways will span the floodplain, improving connectivity when there's a major flood event, but a lot of those low-water crossings are what are leading to your long-term stagnation, because those low-water crossings are actually preventing flow from going downstream, so those will be raised up and you won't have those large amounts of impoundment and just stagnation.
Then you're gonna have to go back and actually dig that out?
Yes, so the channel, the project will have quite a bit of excavation, so we will be excavating below the existing flow line and actually making the channel much wider, but it's all gonna be vegetated.
Yeah, and by when do we get, plan to get this done?
We would like, well, if if we may start design now, we could be ready early, well, till late twenty twenty-five, and then ready for construction early twenty twenty-six, assuming the grant funds are allocated, and we should know that next month.
Thank you very much.
Yes, yes, thank you, sir.
Another happy day.
Another one, Mayor.
Any other questions? Okay.
Pretty cool.
Ms. Trevino, we will vote.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott, Ms. Garza? Thank you. And Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes six to zero with one absent.
On to item thirty.
Consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash one ninety-one R providing a nomination to serve on the Hayes Central Appraisal District Board of Directors and declare an effective date.
Mayor, what actually is their responsibility?
We have nothing to do with appraisals. We are not the appraisal review board. We do management, we, if there's a vacancy, which there isn't very often, we hire the chief appraiser, we approve the budget, any any policies or just routine things that like we approve here, the investment policy or whatever, that's what we do. We have three additional members. The legislature made available to the public the opportunity to elect, uh, from Hayes County voters, three positions, only three people file, so like whenever you have, like the school board last time, there were two people for two slots, and so they canceled the election. We canceled the election. We have three, one gentleman had been on our appraisal review board, so he's very familiar with the process. They are both engaged, and I think they're gonna be productive members of the board, and that's in addition to the members that we have, um, that that we've had before from different school districts and et cetera.
Good.
So.
Thank you.
Does that help?
Yeah, well, yeah.
Okay. Uh, I'm your person now, I'm willing to continue, but as I say every time, uh, I can stay even if I'm not an elected official. We have someone who was, he, he has not been elected official for a really long time, but he's still on the board, there's not term limits. So I'm willing to do this, but I will tell you that if I'm not re-elected, if this body asks me to, uh, resign and y'all can put somebody else in there, I will, I will, I will respect your wishes.
Well, I'll definitely nominate Mayor Jane Houston.
Nominate?
I, you, you second the nomination?
Don't have to second the nomination. This is going to be our motion.
Okay.
So would you phrase that in the form of a motion?
Sure, I motion to nominate Mayor Jane Houston for the appraisal district board of directors.
Okay. For a motion, I do need a second. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Does that, does that wording work for you, Mr. Gary? I was getting there, I know y'all were worried, but I was getting there. All right, um, Mr. Venio, let's vote.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott, Ms. Garza. Thank you. Mayor Houston.
I guess if I volunteer, I'll just vote yes.
Mr. Gonzalez. Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes six to zero with one absent.
On to item thirty-one.
Consider approval of a motion casting the city's vote to fill a seat on the Texas Municipal League Board of Directors.
There are three people, uh, who have put their name in, uh, for nomination, none from our city. And I would like to put the name of Jimmy Jenkins from Smithville in play. Um, I have seen him at different, um, workshops and things, uh, saw him at an all-day workshop last Friday. This is something that he really wants to do, he is engaged in the process. And so I will put forth the name of, uh, Jimmy Jenkins.
From Smithville?
Uh-huh.
I'll second that, I don't think we need it though.
I'm going to make a motion that we cast our vote for Jimmy Jenkins of Smithville. And I'll take a second for that.
Second.
Thank you. Anything else? Mr. Venio, I guess we'll vote.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott, Ms. Garza. Thank you. Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Okay, folks, we, we're on the downhill slide now. Mr. Venio, we'll go on to item thirty-two.
Consider appointments to fill vacancies on the boards and commissions and provide direction to staff.
Uh, did you want to read the list to us?
Yes, I'm so sorry.
Thank you.
Um, A, Animal Shelter, B, Human Services Advisory Board, C, Main Street Board, D, Neighborhood Commission, E, Parks and Recreation Board.
Okay, counsel, we were sent the list of, uh, people who have applied. Kind of hate to say applied, but I guess that's what it really is, um, for all of these. And, uh, can we put animal services aside for just a moment? Uh, I would like to go to Human Services Advisory Board. Um, we have a licensed clinical social worker who has put her name in for this. And, uh, her name is Pam Lambert, I do not know her. Uh, I think we have the one that's required, but it doesn't hurt to have two. Um, and so, do they vote?
I don't, I got to check real quick, Mayor, but I think the other social worker resigned. I believe she moved, so this is replacing this place.
Oh, this is to replace her?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, then, never mind. Okay, so I will put her name in, in nomination. And, uh, let's just vote on these one by one, Mr. Venio.
Okay, ready? Okay, Mr. Scott, Ms. Garza. Thank you. Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason. Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay, um, next, um, for Main Street, we have two people. But one of the folks, uh, also indicated an interest in the Parks and Rec Board. So I'm going to suggest that we put him on the Parks and Rec Board and put the other person on Main Street. So, uh, I would like to put the name of Merritt Drury in play.
For Main Street, correct?
For Main Street, mm-hmm. Any questions, concerns? We'll vote on that one, Mr. Venio.
Okay, um, Ms. Garza. Thank you. Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott. Motion passes six to zero.
Okay. So let's just go ahead and do the Parks and Rec Board, that would be Chase Norris.
Okay. All right, Mayor Houston.
Uh, aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prather. Mr. Scott. And Mayor, uh, Ms. Garza. Thank you. Motion passes six to zero.
For the Neighborhood Commission, we have an application from a Taylor Fawcett for Sector Six. That's where the vacancy is. And so we're fortunate to find someone to, um, fill that slot. So, um, I will put that name in nomination. Y'all have anyone else? Mr. Venio will vote.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott, Ms. Garza. Thank you. And Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay, that brings us back to animal services. This is the committee that there's a, uh, oh, I, I'm sorry, help me, Mr. Venio, there's, there's like someone from our animal shelter, somebody from the county, um, somebody from Hayes County is named by, by the judge or by the commissioner's court. And then there's an at-large position.
Correct.
And this would be the at-large, uh, position. Um, my, my concern with this person, you know, got a lot of good stuff, but they've only been in San Marcos two months. Or at least that's what the application says, and that's my only hesitancy on that one.
Mayor, is there any way to postpone this until we get another applicant for, just in case?
We can.
I'd like to postpone this at least, just to see if somebody else were to apply, they may not have been aware that we have an open position. I'm not saying that Ashton is a terrible, like you said, candidate, it's just I'd like to.
The hesitation is the two months.
That's something, that's.
So, um, do we need a motion to do that? Motion to postpone?
Yeah.
I think I heard you say motion to postpone.
Could I motion to postpone the animal services appointment, please, until?
Okay.
Um, could we give it? Two, is, you think one council meeting or two council meetings is enough time for us to?
Well, when you say one council meeting, remember this agenda and everything's put together.
Oh, that's very true.
That's giving one week.
Can we, uh, possibly do it then? Would you feel more comfortable have first of November?
So the October, I mean, the first meeting in November?
The first meeting in November?
Yeah, the first meeting in November.
Which we're about to determine when that's going to be. First meeting in, in November is legit?
Yeah, let, let's shoot for whatever we think is the first meeting in November.
Ms. Garza?
We need a second.
Hold on, Ms. Garza's got a question. Go right ahead, Ms. Garza. I'm sorry, I see it too. Mr. Gary, would it be okay for her to type into the chat? And I can read the chat, we can display the chat. I would not normally recommend that, Ms. Garza, is that okay with you? Okay, she says yes. As long as we're all seeing it and we're all knowing what she's.
Yes, that, that'd be fine.
Oh, are you asking about the two months, if that, it's what's on her application. And so that's all I know. I, no, ma'am, I did not call to check.
But maybe postponing will give us that opportunity to maybe double-check with her.
Double-check, and she's still in the pool.
Yeah, absolutely, there's, there's no saying we won't choose her, but I just want to give some verification on stuff.
Ms. Garza? Yeah, oh, because I'm, I'm not going to, I'm not going to go there this evening, just because we don't know. Okay, motion to postpone. I'm sorry, do we have a second on that?
Not yet.
I'll second it. Oh, yeah, we were trying to determine when it was being postponed too. Um, okay. Then, motion to postpone, we'll vote on that.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott, uh, Ms. Garza. No, oh, yes, okay, thank you. Mayor Houston.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes six to zero.
Mr. Venio, did we get them all done?
Yes, ma'am.
I think we did.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, on to item thirty-three.
Thirty, okay, yes. Consider approval of a motion changing the city council meeting date schedules from Monday, November four, two thousand twenty-four to Wednesday, November six, two thousand twenty-four.
I went back, I'm sorry. I'll move that we do this, I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
All right. Uh, I went back and watched the meeting, and I can't believe we didn't discuss this. But we were, what we got, um, wrapped around the axle was something that I believe Mr. Prather brought up, was our January meeting was going to be like the second, and the concern was, you know, staff having to work to get all that together. And what we ended up doing is there were five Tuesdays in January, so we moved, we, we went to the second, I'm sorry, the, the fifth Tuesday. And we got so wrapped up in that and a couple of other things, I missed it. So, my motion, and we, uh, Mr. Venio has checked with, uh, Ms. Hernandez and others to make sure that there's nothing that has been set for that date, and the public has been told that that's the date that we would, um, have it. And so, um, let's move that date to the day after the election instead of the day before.
I'll make that motion.
Oh, I already did.
Oh, you did.
If you'll just vote for it, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah.
Let's vote.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott, Ms. Garza. Thank you. Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay, and that takes us to executive session, item thirty-four.
The city council will convene an executive session pursuant to the following sections of the Texas Government Code. One, section five five one point zero seven two, deliberation regarding real property. A, to deliberate regarding the possible acquisition of land on the city's northwest side for park purposes. B, to deliberate regarding the possible disposition of property known as the Mitchell Center located at seven fifteen Valley Street. Two, section five five one point zero eight, zero eight seven, deliberation regarding economic development, to deliberate regarding Project Jolly Rancher.
Okay, um, as always, these were posted on our three o'clock work session agenda also. We held our executive session at that time. We completed all of that, so we do not need to go into executive session now. So we can move on to item thirty-five.
The city council will convene an executive session pursuant to the following sections of the Texas Government Code, just as stated above.
Okay, uh, one A, we provided direction to staff, one B was direction to staff, and item two is direction to staff. Anything actionable from any of that will come before us, uh, on a posted agenda for, uh, for a vote. So we are to question and answer with press and public. Do we have? Okay, um, none, and no one is online? All right, then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Mendoza, seconded by, I'll second it. Let's vote.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott, Ms. Garza. Thank you. Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
And Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
And we are adjourned at eight fifteen. Hear that, people? Eight fifteen.